Meeting of the Oshkosh Common Council. If the city clerk would please take the role.
Sure. Hayes?
Present.
Esslinger?
Here.
Erickson?
Here.
Ford?
Here.
Stevenson?
Here.
Bulow?
Here.
Mughawar?
Here.
Seven present.
Councilmember Hayes will lead us in the invocation this evening, and then we'll have the pledge following that.
As we gather tonight, we are grateful for the good things that have come to this city. May our decisions always be ones that are for the well-being of all whom we govern.
If Willa and Max could come up, we have students from Valley Christian here this evening with us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, ladies, sit down. You guys got time. Very nicely done, and I appreciate you guys being here this evening. This evening, we have Willa Cass as well as Max Seibert from Valley Christian School here. So, thank you for coming this evening. Thank you for leading us through the pledge. Thank you to your parents and relatives for helping you get here this evening. I've got certificates of appreciation for both of you, but before we get to that, maybe we'll give you the mic, give us your name, maybe your teacher and favorite subject this year so far. All right, Max, you want to go first?
My name's Maddox Seibert. My teacher's Mr. Darsky, and my favorite subject is probably math.
All right, good, good. Willa?
My name's Willa Cass, and my teacher is Mr. In. My favorite subject is probably writing or recess.
I like the recess. Very nice. We just did the pledge this evening very much. Thank you. That was a good time for a picture. What are you doing here? Don't worry. Told you this was the worst part. Well, thank you very much. Have a rest of the night.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Before the presentation, we did have one proclamation issued. It was for White Cane Awareness Day. That'll be mailed out to the recipients, but White Cane Awareness Day is on October 15th this year. And actually, I have it. We can read it quick here. White Cane Awareness Day, October 15th, 2023. So whereas on October 6, 1964, the United States Congress designated October 15th of each year as White Cane Safety Day, and whereas blindness and severe visual impairment affect approximately 109,000 Wisconsin residents, and whereas the majority of these persons use travel aids such as white canes or service animal to get around public streets and sidewalks and places of public accommodation, and whereas these travel aids are universally recognized as symbols representing vision loss, and whereas Wisconsin's White Cane Law requires that motorists come to a full stop before approaching closer than 10 feet to a pedestrian who is using a white cane or service animal, and whereas greater awareness of the White Cane Law leads to safer, more attentive driving in general, enhances the safety of all pedestrians, including children, elders, and people with disabilities. Now therefore I, be it resolved, now therefore be it resolved that I, Matt Muger, are Mayor of the City of Oshkosh, to hereby proclaim October 15th, 2023, as White Cane Safety Day in the City of Oshkosh and acknowledge the importance of pedestrian safety year round. And we'll make sure that's mailed off to the appropriate recipient. Next up, we have TIF presentation regarding Best Western Oshkosh Hotel. Gentlemen, if you'd like to come on up, if you can use this one over here. Welcome.
My name is Zio Pekovic. I'm a principal and co-founder of Scarlet Hotel Group, and nice to meet everyone. And Mr. Mayor, thank you for your time this evening, and council members. I think the presentation is up right now, and you all should have handouts. We acquired the Best Western here in town in February of this year. I'm one of the, as I said, principals and co-founders of the company. Am I right? I have Andrew Scarlett, one of my partners, and then David Elgason, who's the general manager of the property and has been there for pretty...
11 years.
11 years. So what we want to go through this evening is sort of what our plan is for the property and what we envision as, you know, the future of this asset. In acquiring the property and, you know, speaking to stakeholders within the city, specifically the CVB and, you know, having conversations with the team over there, our plan going into this acquisition was getting an understanding of, you know, where we feel there's unlocked or, you know, potential to unlock additional value within this property. So we're hotel owners, operators, and developers, so that's our business plan. We own properties throughout the Midwest and the Southeast. I'm based in Chicago along with one of our other partners, and Andrew's in Nashville, but we own assets throughout the country. And analyzing, you know, the specific property, we view this as, you know, tremendous opportunity to build additional business and particularly attract additional group business to the City of Oshkosh, and we felt like there could be a different branding strategy, which is typical in our business of identifying the property, acquiring the property, and then understanding if there's other brands that could help lift ultimately the perception and what sort of groups might stay both at the hotel and have their events at the convention center. So in working with our architectural team and our interior designer group, what we put together in this proposal and this analysis is some preliminary renderings, which are just in draft format at the moment, but the idea here is, and the brand that we've had been having, you know, serious conversations with and were engaged with is Marriott, which I'm pretty sure everyone is familiar with. They're a global powerhouse, the largest distribution system in the world of loyalty members and a significant driver in the meetings and events business and industry. So this is a view of the entrance or the port of cashier. You see the white cladding that we had our architect and designer group put together. And here we have some additional views of the property with the Marriott signage. So this is sort of a view of what we believe could be and what we budgeted for and, you know, what we've, you know, sort of put together with our general contractor on what, you know, pricing to put this project together could look like. You see activation here along the walkway. We have five boat slips at the property, which we think are a tremendous value. We've seen this summer, you know, boaters coming in, stopping at the ground round, enjoying, you know, food, beverages, and then, you know, continuing to going on their way. This is a pretty unique amenity, just being honest. It's one of the things that drew me to this particular property in looking at it. None of our other properties have boat slips available to the hotel, so we felt like, you know, there's a pretty unique sort of value proposition, both to your sort of leisure guests that are visiting for EAA, you know, air venture, as well as, you know, the Pirateman Society, I think was here over Fourth of July weekend, coincidentally. So, you know, you're able to draw a wide variety of groups, and we think it's a unique selling point. So this is the last photo of the exterior. So on to our request. So what we did upon acquisition is we had an appraiser put together, an appraisal which was required by our lender, on what the as-complete value would be of the property if we converted it to a Marriott and spent what we're budgeting to be $10 million to do that conversion. Just to kind of, you know, touch on what the conversion process looks like and, you know, why we would be required to do these things, the brand ultimately dictates what those improvements are, right? So, you know, Marriott came out here and, you know, reviewed the asset. We spent time with them. They saw the condition of the rooms, and they put together an improvement plan, which has, you know, get new nightstands, new mattresses, basically soup to nuts on what all the requirements are in order to have this property compliant with what their brand standards are. Aside from that, you know, even if we contemplated keeping this a Best Western, Best Western has their own standards as well, and we would have to upgrade the property to their newer standards, whether we stayed a Best Western or converted to a Marriott. But under this scenario, this was the math that we did to convert this to a Marriott. So the as-is or as-complete value upon conversion was $23,170,000, and then our all-in budget, which includes acquisition and renovation, is a little over $26 million. Alternatively, to keep the Best Western flag on there, would it be about 40% of our renovation cost or roughly $4 million versus $10 million, which is the expense to convert to a Marriott? So this leaves us with a project gap, which is just under $3 million if we were to convert to Marriott. So we're here tonight to request the city's assistance in helping to bridge that gap, which is, again, just under $3 million, which is outlined right here. We put together just a short slide of, you know, what we view as the economic benefits of the city, in addition to, you know, being able to charge higher room rates in the city, being able to capture higher occupancy tax revenues. As a result of that, there's additional new full-time jobs that would be created as part of the conversion to a Marriott. So our estimate is five to eight. What's really driving that is their concierge lounge or ground floor, what they call an M-club for Marriott loyalty members. So that requirement is to have that fully staffed. We also have a larger bar footprint and a larger restaurant footprint, which would have us hiring a new support team. You know, we really feel that by converting this to a Marriott, what it really does is accomplish one primary driver, which is really positioning the property to be the top hotel for group meetings and for leisure travel in this region. Based on our timing, you know, we're going to be starting a renovation here in the fourth quarter, and then you have an outline here of the additional net room tax to be generated to the city over and above. Kind of what we're looking at is the base being generated as a Best Western today. Here we have a chart. So the property sits in TID number 25, according to our TIF consultant. So what we had them do was just try to put together as simple of a chart as possible, and there's a lot of numbers on here, but basically outlining the 16 years that are remaining, using a discount rate, and then totaling up what that incremental revenue is that's generated through that time period. So according to their math, basically the TIF generates $7.6 million over the next 16 years, and that's $3 million in that present value or in today's dollars is the way that we're viewing this. So that's a quick, but I think thorough overview of the project. I think it gives you all, you know, a good sense of what we're looking at, and we definitely want to open it up to questions and are glad to comment on our project. Thank you.
Any questions? Well, I'm happy to, you know, and I know it's early, but I'm happy to hear, you know, flagship Marriott at the top of this, you know, some of the discussions we had earlier this year, I think it was, regarding the hotel and the, you know, previous ownership and the sale. That was an important factor for us moving forward was that this, you know, was top-tier in terms of the hotel brand and the marketability of it and the attraction, as you mentioned. You know, getting conventions into that building next door is, besides filling your beds, is also, you know, a huge priority for us and for the community, so. And I know those go hand in hand. Go ahead. Yeah, Councilmember Stevenson.
No, I think it's a cool project. I'm excited to hear about this. I assume from staff perspective, we would schedule this for a closed session sometime and get a little bit more details from your guys' end of things.
Once we get an official application, this kind of, I think, is a capstone of what their application will look like. The policy with the council is that presentation first, application, and then we'll start that process that Councilmember Stevenson just referenced.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. So next up, we have public hearing regarding a new ordinance. This will be read three times. I don't have anyone registered to speak on it, but if anybody is here to speak on it, please step forward, and we'll handle that. Ordinance 23-510, approved comprehensive land use plan amendment for interstate commercial to community facility for property located at 425 North Wasburn Street. Plan Commission had a tie vote on this, four to four. Second reading, ordinance 23-510, approved commercial land use plan amendment from interstate commercial to community facility for property located at 425 North Wasburn Street. And third and final reading, ordinance 23-510, approved comprehensive land use plan amendment for interstate commercial to community facility for property located at 425 North Wasburn Street. This will be coming back then at our next council meeting for discussion and action at that time. Next up, we have citizen statements to council. I do have one person registered, I believe, Jeffrey Watts. Are you wanting to speak under citizen statements, or was there a topic on the agenda?
Citizen state.
You're welcome to come on up, sir.
Just a reminder, if you could keep it to five minutes and...
I may need a couple more minutes than five. So I live over on 546 CP Ave., and I've spoken to several councilmembers, and I've left numerous voicemails for Lakeisha. I want to bring up the fact that we have a speeding issue in Oshkosh, Wisconsin, where people will come around the corner going anywhere from 35 to 50-plus, and we have a neighborhood of 16 to 20 kids just on my block. I've built them bikes, I've given some of them bikes, and I, in fact, got into a near-altercation with my neighbor and another random guy who sped by going 55 not even a week ago. I think it's time that the city looks forward to some kind of more severe punishment for ticketing speeders when children are around, or implementing speed bumps at a radius of 50 to 100 feet on the side streets, so that if people do choose to do this, that they damage their own cars, and we can then peg them one by one. I think that's an important issue that needs to be tackled. I recently got the speed checker data. I haven't been able to go through all of it. I'm going to go through all of it and bring it to you guys. It's a beautiful thing. I didn't actually know it saved data until I talked to Carl and Michael, but I've got all of that, and I'll have all that readily available for you at your next meeting, providing you each copies. And it now sits outside of CP Ave. right now. I think it becomes an even more important issue now that we have the day-by-day center there with the new populace of folks, and a lot of people don't look at them as people. They look at them as a, I don't know what they look at them as, but they're speeding by, and they don't really care. You know what I mean? Between the kids, the homeless over there, it is a necessity to tackle this. The other issue I wanted to bring up is that there is a control of the bid property in downtown Oshkosh, Wisconsin, the Langs, Alexander Bishop, and some other individuals. These properties are not being upkept, and if I were to have my residence property and I let the grass grow or I let the property go, the city would ticket me, ticket me, ticket me, and it probably eventually seize my property. I think that in the most in-demand area in Oshkosh, Wisconsin, being the bid, that these properties should be further upkept or better upkept. When you walk downtown Oshkosh, Wisconsin, you can find at least eight to 15 different properties that are not inhabited by any businesses and have not been upkept. One is a former waterbed store that's starting to be upkept, starting to be rebuilt after 14 years of damage, you know, and leakage in through the roofs and stuff. I went in there, and I actually saw it, and I was able to snap off pieces of the sport beams, and I think the city needs to look at holding property owners more accountable for this, rather than when people go to rent these properties, having the property owners go, okay, it's as-is. If you want to rent my property, you've got to fix it. You've got to upkeep it. Recently, my business partner, Derek Erdl, and I, who own Green Thumb Alternatives, a hemp entity in Stevens Point, Wisconsin, were the premier hemp store up there. We wanted to bring our business down here and potentially have an all-in-one grow, retail, and processing facility. It would be the largest in the state if we were to do that, but a lot of the properties just are not upkept, or they're being under control by the Langs, who currently have two separate retail or real estate companies. And then you look at Alexander Bishop, who's also currently locked in by contract for a non-compete with hemp entities. So it's hard for businesses to come in and try to establish when all these properties are being just held on to and not upkept, like, because then we have to turn to you guys and ask you for TIF money. You know what I mean? Hey, these people aren't controlling their properties. So I had a suggestion, and I haven't written it all up. I've got a lot of personal stuff going on, but I talked to Michael a little bit about it, where you could do some kind of chart or graph where, like, the first warning would be a warning if you're not upkeeping your property. The second would be 1% of your property value. And, you know, we're always asking, how do we create funds? How do we generate money? Well, when you start to hold people accountable who have hundreds, thousands of dollars of property, you start to generate funds. We have no garbage cans in our parks. That's how you fix that right there. We have a lack of funding for several things, and I think you could use the funding that you would generate from these property owners and holding them accountable to build the bid, build Oshkosh. And I also think these are two big things, because it's hard for people to come in and want to start a business. I started wanting to open a business, I think it was March that I first talked to Michael. I've had no luck in finding anything in the bid other than this one little small hole in the wall, and I can't make an all-in-one hemp entity in a little box building. So those are my two issues I wanted to bring forth, and I'll have a lot more data for you soon. But the speeding, and I talked to several officers who suggested speed bumps as a more practical option, you know what I mean? And I'm not talking those rinky-dink speedy bumps, I'm talking like real speed bumps that we put in these streets to protect our children. And I think it's necessary. I think we definitely have a speeding problem, and I think when you see the data I bring forth, you're going to see that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up is consent agenda. We do have one person registered to speak, Gerald Jacklin. Welcome.
Hello.
This is regarding number nine, Resolution 23-513 for the Great Neighborhoods CIP funding. Is that correct?
Yes.
Floor is yours. Five minutes.
I'm Gerald Jacklin. I live at 602 Washington Avenue in Oshkosh. I have been a member. This relates to the Plaza and the gazebo building. The Plaza is across from the library. It's the William Waters Plaza. I'm going to do a little bit of educating for the public, so some of this will be redundant for you, for the council, but this involves the rest of the money for building the gazebo, so I'm going to just read away here. I have been a member of the River East Neighborhood Association for many years. Kathy Webb has been our group leader since the onset. She has worked closely with city staff and other members of River East in developing the William Waters Plaza. I am presenting in her absence as she could not make it tonight. Kathy has worked very hard to bring this project to fruition. An ongoing goal of our neighborhood group has been to realize the completion of the construction of the gazebo within the William Waters Plaza. We are grateful that the City of Oshkosh Planning Department has assisted us in this endeavor. This plaza is located directly across the street from the Oshkosh Public Library on Washington Avenue. The library was designed by architect William Waters. The William Waters Plaza fits in nicely at this location with its beautiful landscaping. The entire plaza is like a small park. The design of the gazebo is such that the dome will mirror the dome on the library. Page two. Currently, private fundraising is slated to cover 80% of the building of this gazebo. River East is requesting that the Great Neighborhoods program can hopefully cover the remaining costs. There is a time constraint in that we wish to avoid the potential that private funding could be revoked if not used in a timely manner. Approval of this request would ensure the project can move forward. Great Neighborhood projects are intended to improve the image, market, and physical conditions of Oshkosh neighborhoods. The gazebo, this gazebo would be a welcomed addition to the William Waters Plaza and the City of Oshkosh. Thanks for your consideration in passing this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing as we have no other citizens registered to speak, I'll take a motion and a second on consent. So moved. Second. Any discussion? Seeing none. City clerk, please take the role.
Hayes?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Bulow?
Aye.
Mughawar?
Aye.
Carried seven?
On to pending ordinances. We have ordinance 23-521, approved zone change from single-family residential nine district to institutional district for property located on the south side of the 100 block of West Custer Avenue. Take a motion and a second. So moved. Second. Any discussion? Seeing none. Please take the role when ready.
Hayes?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Stevenson?
No.
Bulow?
Aye.
Mughawar?
Aye.
Carried six?
Ordinance 23-522, approved zone change from two-flat residential ten zoning district with a planned development to central mixed-use zoning district for the property located at 17 East Parkway Avenue. Take a motion and a second, please. Move it. Second. Please take the role.
Hayes?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Bulow?
Aye.
Mughawar?
Aye.
Carried seven?
Ordinance 23-523, amend parking regulations on north side of Ripple Ave. from Oregon Street to Western Terminus. Transportation Committee recommends approval. Move it. Second. Discussion. Seeing none. Please take the role.
Hayes?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Bulow?
Aye.
Mughawar?
Aye.
Carried seven?
Ordinance 23-524, amend parking regulations on the west side of Brown Street from Algoa Boulevard to High Avenue. Transportation Committee recommends approval. Move it. Second. When ready, take the role.
Hayes?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Bulow?
Aye.
Mughawar?
Aye.
Carried seven?
Ordinance 23-525, amend parking regulations on Union Avenue at Algoa Boulevard. Transportation Committee recommends approval. So moved.
Second.
Seeing none. When ready, please take the role.
Hayes?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Bulow?
Aye.
Mughawar?
Aye.
Carried seven?
Ordinance 23-526, amend loading zone to bus loading on the north side of New York Avenue from Kentucky Street to Central Street. Transportation Committee recommends approval. Move it. Second. Seeing none. When ready, take the role.
Hayes?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Bulow?
Aye.
Mughawar?
Aye.
Carried seven?
This is a new ordinance. We don't anticipate any action this evening. Ordinance 23-527, repeal provisions in Chapter Eight of the City Municipal Code requiring a junk dealer license and amend provisions pertaining to direct sellers and solicitors to include junk and scrap collectors. There's no one registered on that one. We'll be bringing that back at the next meeting for action. New resolutions. Resolution 23-528, approve combination B, a Class B beer liquor license Chili's Grill and Bar. So moved. Second. My only question is going to be, I can ask it after this one or the next one, but how many liquor licenses will be left on the shelf after we approve these two?
We will have five.
Thank you very much. If there's no other discussion, take the role when ready.
Hayes?
Aye.
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Buelow?
Aye.
Mughabauer?
Aye.
Carried seven?
Resolution 23-529, approve combination Class B Beer Liquor License for the clubhouse.
Move it.
So moved. Second. Discussion. Seeing none, when you're ready, you can take the roll.
Hayes?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Buelow?
Aye.
Mughabauer?
Aye.
Carried seven?
Resolution 23-530, approve amendment number three to professional services agreement with University of Wisconsin-Milwaukee for archaeological investigations for Pratt Trail reconstruction in the amount of $169,782.
Move it.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, go ahead and take the roll.
Hayes?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Buelow?
Aye.
Mughabauer?
Aye.
Carried seven?
Final new resolution of the evening, Resolution 23-531, approval of acquisition of industrial park land in the amount of $995,000.
Move it.
Second. Discussion. Councilmember Esslinger?
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of questions, maybe help me understand. So this is kind of an alternative to the other property we were looking at, correct?
Correct.
Okay. If we go ahead and buy this, there are no guarantees that this is going to go forward. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Then I'm assuming also that if we buy this, this will come off the tax rolls.
Correct. Right now, it is classified as agriculture, so...
It's low.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Let's see, what's the next question? If it doesn't go through, so we just like, keep it in our inventory, and it seems to me it's been sitting there for 10 years, it's overpriced. So my fear is, is now we're getting it for somewhat of a reduction in price, are we going to buy it for too much, and we're going to sit there for X amount of years until something happens to it?
The options for the site with the surrounding uses, it is limited. You know, we wouldn't want like, residential there, because it's so close to the industrial park. So really heavy industrial is one of the few uses that could be allowed there from a staff perspective, with it having frontage along the railroad also. That's very attractive to us, because they're not building too many more railroads, so having that in our inventory, I think, is going to be a benefit right there also. And then just to have additional land, a good, large piece of land that we can offer that's a very nice shape also, is a benefit.
So, I mean, nothing precludes the developer from buying it themselves and going forward, right?
That is correct, but like you said, you know, we'd rather just have it in possession, so we have it, we know we have it, and it's a piece of property that we can offer.
So is this going to be a giveaway after we buy it, then?
Uh, no.
The minimum price we sell in the industrial park is $26,000, so it'd be a slight, slightly more than what we're buying it for.
Per square foot. Per square...
No, 24,000 and an acre.
Yeah, heck, I'm terrified.
I fucking thousands. I didn't even catch that, so, everybody else heard that except me, I'm sorry.
Okay, so...
The terms would be similar to what we had discussed previously.
So the money's going to come from the Stormwater Utility Funds, correct? If we do that, we use those funds, I know we've had several people, including myself, complaining about the rates and the amount that we're paying for these, the fees keep going up and up and up. If we deplete $995,000, are we almost guaranteeing then that those rates are going to go up to cover the costs that we incur with this?
Originally, the estimate for the Rural Two Pond was about $15 million. The bids came in about $10 million. And because of the, because of the Stormwater Utility using that property, they're probably saving millions more than that had they had to put it off-site. So this was actually saving money. It's, the project will still be, from my standpoint, will still be under budget. The fund does have sufficient cash, and this will be used funding with the surplus that already exists in the Stormwater Fund.
So will there be any, but can you say if there's going to be any increases in the Stormwater Utility because of this project?
I would say with Rural Two, yes. With this project, I would say no. But Russ certainly will, you know...
Yeah, let me, if you don't mind, let me jump in real quick. I do not foresee any increases in our stormwater rates. The city each year looks at our cost for stormwater utility, and the city council determines those stormwater rates. There was some discussion from the business community about our stormwater rates, and when we worked with elders last year in evaluating the financial condition of our Stormwater Utility Fund, we have now gathered enough reserves to actually use some cash for projects, for stormwater projects. In the past, we used to issue debt for that. Last year, we used about $9 million of stormwater utility cash for projects that we typically would have financed for. In 2024, we're estimating we'd have about $4 million in cash to be used for stormwater projects that we typically would have borrowed for, so we have enough reserves to do that. So we have adequate reserves in our Stormwater Utility to cover that investment of the land.
Okay, if we buy this and then this company does do what they want to, they're going to use this property, what is the net dollars from us purchasing it to what we're going to sell it to them for?
That would be economic development. I was just chiming in on the stormwater impact, I'm sorry.
Give me one second.
And then that would be, I'm assuming that'd be a net loss, but, so that would be our kind of contribution to the project?
It would be a net gain, because we'd likely sell it for $26,000.
Okay, so it's, alright.
Yeah, yeah. And that's why we kind of held with that, that range, knowing that, you know, I think we feel comfortable that we have a project that's, looks pretty good. If not, we have it available, because the Clark Hill Farm is essentially off the market for the next 50 months. So we, we would need something to, to bide our time until that's available and it's settled and everything.
And the name or the type of company this is cannot be disclosed at this time, is that correct?
Not at this time, but, but it's consistent with the uses that are allowed. It's not a, it's not anything that'll produce any, you know, any smokestack type of thing. It's a, more of a cleaner type of operation.
And we, we have a contingency that we can check that property over for any, right?
Yep, absolutely.
Yeah, can't happen until that gets a clean Phase One environmental. And if Phase One looks weird, then we're going to do a Phase Two environmental.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else have questions or comments? I've got just a couple of brief ones, mostly yes or no, probably. Desirable piece of property in our southwest industrial park?
Yes, as I mentioned, rail, huge, it's adjacent to our existing parks, so we can just easily expand our boundaries and serve it with our existing utilities.
In terms of current land bank out there, definitely makes business attraction and retention and expansion much more desirable in that space?
Yes.
Okay. And then if and when upon sale, those funds are being returned back to the Stormwater Utility, correct?
Not necessarily, because Stormwater Utility is effectively devaluing the land over there, so this is essentially like a leasing of the property.
Okay.
So the Stormwater Utility needs to pay for it. That is hard for Mr. Robbie to swallow, but somebody had to tell him that, and that person was me. So I want to make sure, I'm glad you asked the question, but it's something that the, I refer to it as Kelly's property and James' property, as we're talking in the family, but Kelly doesn't have a piece of land to market for the next four-plus years in the park, and the cost to the utility for using this, this land has saved them millions of dollars in trucking costs. To truck it off-site, I think, would have been another $15 million. That was, you know, something that we didn't want to do either, but we, but we do know that the price we pay for it is, it's off the market for 50 months, so, and that's assuming that it settles the way it's supposed to.
Okay. That's all I got. Councilmember Ford?
Yeah, the profit that we would get if we do sell it, I'm just back of the envelope, but it looks like it's almost $50,000. Maybe would that go back to the Stormwater Utility, or where would that money go? The profit we would get from, from selling it at 26...
I wasn't there.
A square acre, not foot.
And we may be getting two in the weeds on that part, but just, it's worth asking.
If Russ has some insight...
The only insight I would have is, you know, as we do this transaction as part of your resolution, we would probably put, I would recommend we would keep the proceeds in the industrial park...
Okay.
...fund for other industrial park purposes. What we're looking at is, is trying to provide another opportunity for economic development, because Stormwater is basically utilizing that property and made it unavailable for use. So I would say, from a financial standpoint, I would recommend keeping those proceeds in the industrial park fund.
Okay, no, and that's fine, I just, it's in the weeds, but I'd like to know where the money's going, if we're making money.
No, that's a good question, and that's what my recommendation would be.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Stevenson?
I like this acquisition, I think it's, it's going to be a good investment in our future, and I don't think you can really lose on land, so if we ever did want to unload it at some time, I think we'd be able to get our money back. Like, a big thing when we're looking at industry in the city, I think we learned over the pandemic, a lot of industry-related stuff is kind of pandemic-proof. So moving forward into these, I don't know, tumultuous times, and nobody can tell the future, I think expanding our industrial footprint is a good idea, and manufacturing is strong in Wisconsin, and I've seen a lot of growth, and I'd like Oshkosh to capture that growth, so...
Seeing there's no other comments, if you please take the roll on 23-531.
Hayes?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Buelow?
Aye.
Mughabauer?
Aye.
Carried seven?
On to council discussion, direction to City Manager, future agenda items. We have budget workshop Monday the 30th, Tuesday the 31st, 8:00 AM to 4:30, right up here. That'll be following, we do have one more council meeting between here and then. Any council member announcements or statements? If not, turn the meeting over to Mark. Russ is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple items, professional service agreements and amendments, one for the public museum for the gallery build-out, the Waldwick Gallery build-out, now it's called, as well